Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhart.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marx. Jean McGowan.
Here.
Jim Radecki.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
I received a text message from Alderman Marx about a half an hour ago. I forwarded that message to the city attorney, the city administrator, and our clerk. He will be arriving late, so we should expect him momentarily. We begin tonight's council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to ask my friend, Dan O'Connell, to please lead us in the pledge, and we'll follow your lead.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. We have two guests with us this evening who arrived a little earlier tonight. Dan O'Connell, a senior at Geneva High School, and Divya Patel, also a senior at Geneva High School. If you two could please just join us at the podium. They're here for extra credit. Or are they? I've got documents for both of you just to prove that you in fact were here. But we want to begin just by everyone getting to know you a little bit. Dan, why don't you say a few words about yourself?
Okay, I am Dan O'Connell. I want to study psychology when I go to college next year at St. Louis University.
And you want to be a psychiatrist, correct?
Yeah.
You are in the right room, my friend.
Okay, I guess I'll go. I'm Divya. I might, you guys might have seen me before. I've spoken at some of the meetings. I also am going to St. Louis University, and I'm studying medical sciences. So I want to end up in a medical field, but I'm not exactly sure where yet.
Now, are you two a couple?
Yes.
What do you think of that, clerk? It's been a good four years at Geneva High School?
Very good.
Yeah? And how long have you two known each other? Or I should say, how long have you two been a couple?
About a year.
Yes, but we've known each other for two because we went on one of the school-sponsored trips to Costa Rica for an immersion trip, and that's where we met, so.
And what's a immersion in...
We stayed with like a host family in Costa Rica.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's cool. And obviously you had to speak the language and all that good stuff. So are both of you fluent?
Well...
We're getting there.
Yeah.
Getting there? And when do you ship out to St. Louis?
August.
So you're really passionate about this, aren't you, Dan? Divya, when does Dan ship out to St. Louis University?
It's a good question. I'd like to say I know, but I don't know.
And when did you both receive your acceptance letters? Because I know that's got to be very intense.
Yeah, she got hers before mine.
Well, duh.
It was a couple of months ago, but we were waiting to hear back on financial information, so we just both committed.
And what's famous about St. Louis University campus?
I don't know. I would say the city. The city is like an up-and-coming city, so that's pretty cool. They have a lot of new programs, like they just started their neurology program, and they have a lot. They're one of like the biggest research facilities in all of the country, so it's pretty cool.
Now, Divya sounds, and you are obviously very intelligent and articulate. Divya's father and mother own Physicians Express in Jan Charles. So Divya's father is a physician. Your mother's a trained physician assistant, and they operate together. So Dan, what about you?
My parents?
Anything that impresses us?
Well, my mom works at Bye Bye Baby.
Oh, cool.
And my dad passed away a couple of years ago.
Sorry to hear that.
Thanks.
So this is a big night for you guys though because you're together. And the spring offers some unique opportunities for seniors certainly, and for couples in particular. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, well, there's prom.
Oh, when is prom?
Uh, like, May 13th, 12th?
Dan? Mr. Clerk, when is prom? Do we know? Is it 12th? Is it? May 12th?
Ah ha. That's what I was thinking of.
And prom this year is downtown again. And as I understand it, prom tickets are 140 bucks each. Is that amazing?
I actually talked to Ms. Kohler. I was talking, and we were talking about the prom tickets price, and she said it keeps raising because the gas prices keep rising too, so.
And you bought that? And where is prom being held this year?
Uh, the Museum of Science and Industry.
So you board the buses at Geneva High School, you head to prom, transportation's provided, which is nice and safe, you eat to your heart's content, you dance to your heart's content, you return to Geneva High School for post-prom. Is it true that you're locked in until 4:00 a.m.? Is that right?
I don't think it's that late, but...
Are you guys going to post-prom as well?
Yeah.
Are you? Okay. And you've got your outfits picked out and all that good stuff?
Working on it.
Yeah, sort of.
Now, the assumption is that you're going together, but there's been no formal request, so as I understand it anyways, it's my impression.
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay, so. Now, I referenced earlier that I'm wearing a sweater tonight, Mr. Clerk, and I've never ever worn anything but a tie and a coat. And personally, I'm a little warm right now, so do you mind if I just take this off? A little bit? Do you mind?
Will you go to prom with me?
Yes! Of course I will!
That's not it. Hold on, hold on. We have agreements you both need to sign.
Okay.
And Divya? Do you recognize their music?
Yes.
This is their favorite song, ladies and gentlemen. Ed Sheeran and Beyoncé. There's a question, who needs Beyoncé?
Geneva High School prom.
Okay. I guess I'll read it too. "I, Divya Patel, having mutual sentiments towards Dan O'Connell, do hereby accept Dan's invitation to accompany him and be his date to the 2018 Geneva High School prom." Okay. "Together, we proudly affix our signatures to this agreement and promise our parents, our school, and our community that we will have fun, be safe, and create an evening that will long be remembered."
See, ladies and gentlemen, there's duplicate copies of this agreement. As is often the case with legally binding agreements, correct? And I have the honor of signing as the witness.
You told me it was expedited! I always say.
Now, in the interest of full disclosure, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. O'Connell emailed me about three months ago. Isn't that true?
Yeah.
So, "Hey, Mr. Burns." I was like, whoa. And I immediately forwarded that email to my brother, the teacher. I said, "Is this kid legit?" And he said, "Yes, he's a good young man." And then we've been corresponding via text for that period of time. We met at City Hall on Friday this past week, and Dan, to his credit, laid all this out. Interestingly enough, two weeks ago, Dan sent me a text and said, "This is going to be more difficult than I thought. I can't get her to come to City Hall that night." Because we originally thought April 16th, so we had to move it up because finally you acquiesced.
Oh, I volunteer at Lazarus actually at this time.
I know you do. And guess who's involved with making this happen tonight? The folks at Lazarus. And guess who else is involved? Your teacher. Everyone knows about this but you.
Wow. That's why I got that email.
So Divya, if you'd like to go to prom with anybody else, now's your chance. She's already signed, that's true. Well, you guys are good sports. Dan, congratulations. Divya, congratulations. Thank you very much for letting all of us be a part of this special night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to leave and like punch them, go ahead. Dan, text me tomorrow if you're at Delnor. I'll come visit. Wasn't that wild, guys? My god. Dan's mom is tuning in from home, and Divya's parents were also encouraged to tune into tonight's meeting, so hopefully they did. Thank you all. Alderman Marx has arrived. I believe the clerk has recorded that accordingly. Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-2019, City of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. This is a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Alderman Marx to open the public hearing. Is there a second? Alderman Bruno? Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of opening the public hearing on the matter as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is open, ladies and gentlemen. Questions or comments from anyone joining us this evening? Oh, we have a call from Mr. Patel. From the dais. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. A voice vote is sufficient to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to consider the mayor's appointment of Jill Johnson to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Ms. Johnson is with us this evening. Is there a motion? Alderman McGowan makes the motion. Alderman Maladra makes the second. Questions or comments? Ms. Johnson, do you wish to say anything? You sound like Dan O'Connell. Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
I'm staying.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 4, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? So moved. Before I entertain a second, Alderman Radecki, had your hand up for something?
Yeah, I'd like to remove an item from the omnibus agenda. Item H, please.
The omnibus agenda as amended. Who would like to offer that motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Ruby with the second. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 5 passes unanimously. Excuse me, item 5 as amended passes unanimously. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills for our consideration.
Total bills for payment, $753,176.61. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Motion by Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the website and our council packets this evening. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or comments from the dais? Seeing none, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart. Don Cummings. Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously. We skip to Committee of the Whole, items of business. Item 11A is to recommend denial of a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone 304 East Side Drive from the R3 medium to high-density single-family residential district to R7 multiple-family residential district. Is there a motion? So moved. Motion by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Kilburg.
Point over, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Because of the vote last week, an affirmative vote on this will be to uphold the denial of the change.
That's correct. An aye vote is to support denial of the request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Mr. Clerk?
I have a question.
Correct. The applicant is not present this evening, correct? I did not see the gentleman.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
I sense that part of, and it might have been my imagination, I sense that part of the hesitation from last week on approving this was that it would be too dense. If we went to R7, the density would be too high. And I think that we have run into another issue here where we could flesh out our zoning and help the city and help the developers a little bit. We ran into something similar on Western Avenue when we were going for a higher zoning with an applicant that wanted to do duplexes, but the only zoning that was available also allowed that applicant to go to triplexes. There was a lot of pushback, a lot of distrust about that. And I think if we had had at that time the opportunity for zoning for duplexes only, that perhaps that would have passed, or it would have been maybe a closer, more of a discussion. In this case, it seems that some higher density is interesting, and the goal of the council, and certainly is the goal of the city, in the zoning in the map. On the other hand, it seems that R7 allows such high density that we backed away from it. And so because of those two instances, I think at some point, obviously not tonight, we should consider carving out and narrowing our zoning to represent exactly what we want people to have. And it would also help the applicant so that then, when they apply for certain zoning, they know that they are only able to build a certain type of housing structure building in that zoning. I think it would help everybody all the way around. We are moving closer and closer to more and more higher-density issues in the city, and I think this will... This has come up twice now, I think, in 12 months, and will probably continue to come up. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? While not directly related to this item, but Alderman Cummings certainly opened the door to discussion regarding in general R7, and perhaps the reason why the Western Avenue site was denied. It's important that, and I know all of you do know this, and I trust that all those tuning in and all those in the audience know this as well. The R7 recommendation from the developer at the Western Avenue site was also, or there was also attached to it codicils that the developer agreed to only duplexes would be built. Period. We had not only legal documents enforcing that, the council accepted that. It's also worth noting, and I'm certain that no one is surprised by this, oftentimes when private meetings are held legally between developers and council members, there is agreement reached, and then sometimes those agreements are changed when the public meeting takes place. It's also safe to say, and forgive me if I sound a little bit too aggressive, that the Western Avenue site was the subject of unfortunate political timing. And I believe that it went away because of that political timing. But the Alderman is correct, that density is a subject that we not only embrace, that we are asking for, and that we need to figure out a way to not only request, but then once again, support when these petitions come forward. So I think that's a fair statement. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually tend to agree with much of what Alderman Cummings said. My reason for not approving the rezoning is I think we need to look at that area more holistically. It's not the density of R7, but I think that one parcel or those two parcels seem like spot zoning to me. I think we could do a much better job with a broader look at that area. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Berger?
I just want to say I agree with Alderman Cummings that I'd like to see some research into what can be done between R3 and R7. There does seem to be some kind of a yawning gap there that some of us are, and I say this as someone who voted for the Western Avenue duplexes, but that some of us are have a little, you know, maybe our city staff comes back and says, "Really, what we got is the best option," but I'd like to at least dive into that a little more. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? A reminder that an aye vote supports the decision by the Committee of the Whole, which is to deny the request for rezoning. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings. Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
The motion to deny the zoning as described under item 11A passes unanimously. 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes. We move on. Two, item 11H, which was removed from the agenda by Alderman Radecki. And that item is to approve resolution number 2018-24, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a retainer agreement with Guido and Finson for legal services. Is there a motion? So moved. Marx? Seconded by Cummings. Alderman Radecki, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Stephanie or Chuck, I don't know who's more appropriate, maybe Stephanie, this is more appropriate for you. I mean, in essence, are we switching law firms right now?
No, we're just adding legal services. We're adding a broader range of attorneys that we can use for legal services. Mr. Radovich would still be providing legal services as well.
I understand that he's of counsel, and you are both of counsel for both firms, but it has the feel to me that we're, you know, that another law firm, because they will be compensating Mr. Radovich, we will no longer be compensating him directly. It will come from Guido and Finson. Is that the correct understanding?
That's more of an administrative matter than any substantive. I've been affiliated with Scott Finson's firm for, I think, 12 years. Scott was an alderman on this city council in the early 2000s, I think. So that affiliation has been there. Ron Sandak is an experienced municipal lawyer as well, so.
Mayor of Downers Grove, too.
He was the mayor of Downers Grove, state representative. So it just seemed to me that it was a, it's a good fit. I think Stephanie can talk as far as the city's perspective, but it seemed to us that we could provide some additional coverage, because quite frankly, for the last several years, it's sort of been, the city attorney's been in the position of ad hoc legal services, in other words, responding when requested to respond to specific items other than attending a city council meeting. So this is a little broader approach of providing legal services.
I'm not questioning their ability or their experience.
And currently, Guido and Finson did provide services whenever Chuck was unavailable, so.
I guess, you know, just to me, it has a little bit of a feel of a switch with law firms, but I guess it's a professional services contract anyway. It wouldn't necessarily need to go to bid for anything anyway, would it? If we were to make a switch?
The appointment of a city attorney is traditionally an appointment of the mayor with the advice and consent of the city council. It's a position, it's not a position like a, an engineer or a architect that is governed by the professional services statute of Illinois, where if you don't have a prior arrangement with that professional, you then seek proposals for their services, and you examine their credentials, et cetera. So you're correct. It's more of a personal relationship.
One other question, I guess, Stephanie. I've entered into flat fee arrangements and agreements with firms over the years with my business, and, you know, it always feels that somebody's a winner and somebody's a loser on a flat fee sometimes. I realize that the firm will get savings administratively, they don't have to keep time sheets, the billing, all those things, and hopefully that enters into more efficiency with us and all the things we're doing. How will we know at the end of a certain period of time whether or not it's an equitable agreement for us?
Well, before he answers, that's not true, Jim, because we are keeping detailed time sheets. Because just internally, we have to do that.
Okay, but I mean, even when we're in the flat rate agreement?
Absolutely.
That's great. That's what I really wanted to know.
And there's a test period.
Well, and I also need to know which fund to charge the legal services to, so if they're doing work for one of the utilities, it would be charged to the utility fund as opposed to the general fund.
Right.
So we will have all of those detailed records, and there is a review period to periodically look at it and make sure that it's a good balance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Radecki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 11H is passed unanimously. We skip down to item 12, presentation of ordinances, petitions, resolutions, and bid awards. Item 12A is to recommend resolution number 2018-25, adopting fiscal year 2018-2019, City of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. Is there a motion? Motion by Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Cummings. Questions or comments from the audience? From the dais? Alderman Radecki.
Well, just a couple of brief comments just about the process in general. First of all, thank you. You guys do a great job with the budget. I mean, I know how much time it takes for the city staff to do this. I still have some reservations with the budget this year, and they're no secret. I made them known to everybody what my thoughts were on a couple of, what I think are major issues. One of the things that, it's interesting to me that when we look at, we had our planning session back in November, and we established our priorities, and of course, we have a $103 million budget that is in support of those. And I find it just a little bit curious that what some of our priorities were and what we're really doing to support those. It's interesting to me that public safety or pedestrian safety was the number one thing. I made my comments back then. I made my comments back then. I didn't think we had an issue. I think pedestrian safety is something that we should always be working towards improving and should be tannemount. To, to, to make it the number one priority when we had, I believe, two pedestrian accidents, one minor one that year was, was curious to me. That, that being said, we also have, one of our priorities in there is, is senior and affordable housing, that, which, which is a big ticket item. When I look at this budget, and I could be wrong, because it is very detailed, I don't know every line of the budget, I don't know what this budget does to advance that. And I, and I do know that we, we have constraints as a non-home rule team here, I, I get that, but I, I guess my comment is I would have liked to have seen more substantive discussions about what we would do proactively to address those things, just to, just to simply say that those are one of the priorities and one of the goals. I, I don't know that we, we've done enough in that regard, and I don't know that the budget reflects that, any of this $103 million that we have, and it really goes to that, to that end. And finally, the last thing that, you know, I'll make it very clear that, and Stephanie and I corresponded back and forth, she asked me to clarify some of my comments from the other day. When you look at this budget in more detail and you look at what our current budget year is, with what we're asking in the next budget cycle, our salaries are going to go up about When you look at the, the Medicare, Social Security, three pensions, that adds another $200,000 to it, it's a, it's a $750,000 increase, or an anticipated increase from one year over another year. I wasn't necessarily in favor of the gap implementation. I was in favor of partial gap implementation. When we looked at the detail, which I had asked for a detailed meeting, which the council decided not to have, there are definitely inequities that I thought needed to be addressed, but I didn't think they needed to be addressed on a wholesale basis. And I think on a going forward basis, the multiplication factor of that is, is going to become greater as the years go by. In fact, the following year, the projection for wages, for pensions, for, for Social Security will go up another 1.45 million by my calculation. I share these numbers with Stephanie. She's shaking her head now, but I didn't hear anything when I shared it with her, so maybe you can go clarify them. But they're, they're going to go up. Now, not all of that certainly isn't related to the gap and what my issues were, but the fact of the matter is, we have some significantly escalating costs with our budget that I don't think we did enough to control. So, based upon those reasons, I'm respectfully not going to vote in favor of the budget this year, so.
On the matter that he wrote, that he raised?
Actually, on the pedestrian safety and a couple of issues that he raised. I would just encourage you to read through the goals documents, because those goals documents do reference those goals that are directly related to the priorities set by the council. You'll also see some in the capital, there's the pavement marking program and some of that. So, there are, they are listed in there as far as what they are supporting. And then, I did receive notice today from the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, which is our pension that covers all non-public safety employees, that our contribution rate currently is 11.71 percent. In January, that rate will drop to 9.24 percent. So, that's, that's the lowest that I've seen that rate in the 10 years that I've been here, and I didn't go back beyond that. But I think that's important to note. And looking at the general fund, I show from fiscal year 19 to 20, going $430,000. So, I, you said 1 point, something.
Compared to this current year.
To this current year. So, we go from.
Yeah, we go.
Okay. So, it's roughly 1.2. Yeah. Okay. Just making sure we're talking apples to apples. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Cummings?
I run in the mornings here. I, I, I run on the weekends in the daytime and walk around frequently, and I, I am pleased to see the focus on pedestrian safety. I think the easier and, and the fewer barriers, physical barriers, psychological barriers there are out there for pedestrians, I think, the, the more people we will have out walking around. I've, I've almost gotten hit multiple times crossing on Fourth Street, crossing State, because people don't care that there are crosswalks there, they actually accelerate towards the pedestrians sometimes, that's frustrating. A lot of the budget I'm, I'm really happy with. I am really disappointed in, in the amount of money that we're, we, we hired a consultant for $40,000 or so to see if we had competitive wages. The consultant came back and said, you have competitive wages. And we gave a $575,000 increase. And I look at our, our list of priorities, especially on top of the fact that we hired a consultant and the consultant said you have competitive wages. And I, I think about, we had a fireman in at Rotary Club talking about the equipment. Chief was here talking about, you know, when a house burns these days, it's, it's plastics and it's synthetics and, and the masks they need and the clothing they need to keep that stuff out, and the, and the police need bulletproof vests, and the fire trucks are falling apart, and, and on and on and on. And we have this list of priorities, and again, we had a consultant that said you have a competitive salary structure, and the council voted to give a $575,000 plus increase in salaries. That's, that's incredibly disappointing to me, especially in light of all the other priorities we have. And I know I'm, we're, I'm not going to turn it around tonight, and I know it's going to go through. But when we hired a consultant, and Alderman Maladra has said this to me, why hire a consultant if we're going to vote against him? We hired a consultant and the consultant said we had a competitive wage structure and we decided to go to very competitive. We don't have a revolving door of, of people exiting the city. We have a competitive wage, wage structure. We have a lot of priorities in this city of 22,000 people. I'm, I'm very disappointed in that allocation to the salary structure. Thank you.
If I may, just to clarify a few things, one of the questions that was asked after the study of Alderman Rodecky, which was sent to all of the aldermen, was what the cost of that to the salaries were, and he asked me to exclude what would have been merit increases. And if you look at that number, the total first year cost was 131,000. The total cost, including merit, was 306,000. So, it wasn't the 500,000. So, I think it's, we have to be careful, kind of throw in numbers out there that we look at the, the devils in the details. So, it was not that all positions were out of class, but there were some positions that were significantly out of, out of compensation, competitive compensation. So, for the most part, the majority of the employees only received what would have been equivalent to a merit increase.
We are going from a competitive salary structure to a very competitive salary structure, according to the consultant. And in absence, I, I always think, so, so what are we solving? You know, we, we buy a new fire truck, we're solving a lot of issues that, that are, that I can, that I can understand, and maybe I can't understand this. If I'm running a company and people are flying out the door for higher wages, I think we have some issues. We, we need to look at our salary structure, and if, on the exit interview, they're saying, I'm leaving for higher money, for more money, over and over and over, and we have 20 and 30 percent turnover, I get it. But when we have a list three feet long of priorities, and we hire a consultant who says we have a competitive salary structure, and we don't have a high turnover rate, I, I don't think that that priority should be up near the top and have that money spent on. We have a competitive salary structure, according to a third party, we don't have a turnover problem, and we do have a long list of priorities that we've come up with.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, if staff could make sure I'm clear on this, the, this council had a stated goal to have the city structure, salary structure to be at the midpoint of competitive, or midpoint of comparable communities. Is that, is that correct?
At the 50th percentile, correct.
The 50th percentile. And the, I, I remember there being quite a bit of discussion over what, you know, highly competitive, competitive, highly competitive meant that was the 50th percentile. So, that is, that is the city's goal, to have our structure centered around that. What I wouldn't want to do is wait until we did have high turnover before we address salaries. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
Thank you. To the question of what are we solving for? I think if we get to a point where we have massive turnover, we're a little bit late in solving whatever problems we have. I don't know a good, sound business that waits until employees are fleeing before they make adjustments and changes. And we are a business. The problem that we're solving is fairly evident, or became plainly evident, once, once we got the details on what the increase for this year would be. You'll recall that in an earlier discussion of budgets, the question came up, what do other non-home rule communities do? And I did some research to find out what they did. This was in relation to assistant city administrators, when we found out that most all of them have. So, in this case, I took those same communities and I looked at what they paid, the same job where we have big gaps that we're closing. And I found that even after this action to, tonight, we're still low. We're not quite at the 50th percentile yet. So, to me, the problem that we're solving is, is pretty evident. We have a gap in, in our pay structure, and that gap is, in, in terms of what we actually pay, it's also a gap in terms of what our own policy has been, which is to be an employer of choice in the municipal industry, for want of a better term. And it's a gap that became evident when this council requested a study. And so, we did a study, we found out what the facts are, and it seems that we're trying to find different ways of taking the bull by the horns. To Alderman Rodecky's point, there is some allure to doing it in pieces, but if our problem really is what we're going to be adding to the Social Security expense and to the pension expense, et cetera, I don't really think that it makes that much of a difference if we take the bull by the horns and solve the problem in two big chunks at the beginning, or if we do it slowly over a three to five year period, because we're looking at employees who are fairly young, who are going to be in the system for a long time, and the cost in terms of pension and things like that will accrue, whether you solve that problem in five years or three years. And if you don't solve that problem, you're creating another problem. So, to me, in spite of the disappointment of some of my partners, I guess if, if anything, what I'm disappointed in is that we established a policy several years ago, and we abandoned that policy for whatever reason, and in abandoning that policy, gaps were created, and the time is now to close those gaps, or you will create a problem where you have this turnover that we claim we don't see. And so, I'm comfortable with the budget as presented. I'm comfortable with the salary part of that budget. In terms of what that budget does for our priorities and goals, I heard mention of it being a hundred, some, a hundred-plus million dollar budget. What's the general fund portion of that?
Roughly?
Roughly?
Yeah.
What was the answer?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So, that 100-plus million, I don't really see the water fund or the electric fund doing a whole lot to enhance pedestrian safety. Our policies, or not our policies, our priorities are pretty much strictly directed to things that the general fund can solve. So, when we talk about the budget, in terms of our priorities, I think that we should restrict ourselves to the numbers of the general fund. I agree with Alderman Rodecky that it would be nice during the budgeting process to see how what we plan on doing next year helps move us forward towards those priorities. But I believe that outside of business, as usual, the things that we can do to address those priorities, we pretty much take advantage of opportunities when they present themselves. And so, it's kind of difficult at the beginning of a year to say specifically, unless it's a big capital project or whatever, that, oh, we'll take it, we'll, we'll enhance pedestrian safety by doing, you know, this or that or the other thing. As long as I believe, as I do, that, that the budget is consistent with where our budgets have been in the past, and that our budgets are consistent with our goals and philosophies as an organization, and they're consistent with our strategic plan as a business, then I'm comfortable with the budget, and I think this one is consistent with all of those. Thanks.
Anyone else in the dais? Anyone from the audience? Just a couple of thoughts, if I may. Some of you may recall, last year at this time, I made a couple of statements and was resoundly castigated for making such ridiculous statements about the budget process. But I think it's important for all of you here this evening, all of you tuning in, and certainly for the council, as just perhaps a fresh reminder. The gap analysis, as addressed by Alderman Rodecky, was voted on December the 4th of 2017, and Alderman Rodecky voted against that gap study. Alderman Rodecky was quoted in the papers as saying that the gap study and its findings were, quote, "patently unfair to the employees." Four months have passed, four months have passed, and there's been not one question or concern or criticism of the gap study, how it impacted the budget. Twenty-plus budget meetings have been held, which we were all invited to attend, and for the last 30 days, the budget you see tonight, save for the amendment as a result of the successful sales tax referendum, has been in the public realm, and it's my understanding, and this could be due to understanding of, or no concerns there in, not one, not one question has been asked of the city administrator with respect to the budget presented for this evening. So, similar to years past, we wait till the evening of, and then we bring forward our statements for effect. I'm not finished. So, while we express disappointment, and it's articulate, it's perhaps even worthy of some ink in the local press, not one person on this council can disagree, that if it's true, a budget expresses the organization's values, then who amongst us can say our staff are not valued? I suspect there are some who believe that, but if we want to carry out the objectives, the goals, the challenges, embrace the opportunities, who's going to do it? Us? No, we expect the professional staff to do so. We throw around numbers, assuming that no one will question those numbers. $575,000 in pay raises, that's been proven to be untrue. Out-of-control pensions, we all know that the pension crisis begins and ends with our friends in Springfield. Who among us has lobbied our representatives and senators to say, knock it off? Who? If you have, I'm not aware of it. I know some of you have, no question. So, it's fun, it's enjoyable, it's kind of theatrical to wait to the very last minute and say, I'm disappointed, or I'm going to vote against this budget because there are certain elements I'm not in favor of. That's shocking. The last alderman who did that, did that because there wasn't enough money in the budget for a particular project he wanted, and it was seen as the most ridiculous statement of all. A vote against this budget, in my humble opinion, is a vote against all the work we've done collectively, all the discussions we've had, all the honest and respectful disagreements we've had, all the hard work the staff has invested, and it sends a powerful signal to those people we count on the most, we respect the least. Alderman Cummings. Ben Rodecky.
I, you do have a good way with words, always. However, I have to disagree. I find it disingenuous to be told that if I disagree in the public forum, which we have a public forum here.
Absolutely.
On purpose, that I'm waiting until the last, or that a person is waiting until the last moment. I was against the.
I was against the consultant's study. I was against the raise because the consultant said we had a competitive salary structure. It's not a binary decision. When you have a, an employee workforce that has a competitive salary, to say that you don't want to bump it to very competitive doesn't mean that you don't, a person doesn't respect the employees. Now, I think, speaking of soundbites and print, that, that sort of argument, that sort of sentence gets print. And people listen to it and they think, "My God, he's, he's against the, the employees." That's not how it works, and it's not fair. What I'm saying is, when we hire a consultant, and the consultant says, "We have a competitive salary structure," and we turn around and go to very competitive, we have a bunch of money from this sales tax, a bunch of money. We also have a long list of priorities. I disagree with the prioritizing of the spending of the money. Doesn't mean I don't like the employees. I, that is absolutely not, it's not even right. It's not right of you to say that. I don't think we should be raising salaries from competitive to very competitive when we don't have an issue, according to the consultant, and we do have a ton of other things to spend. I've been saying that since the consultant's study. I've said it in between the consultant's study and now, and this is a public forum, and of course I'm going to bring it up. You don't want 10 people here, I don't think, deep in your heart, you want 10 people here who nod and agree with you. We don't want that. You don't want that. The people don't want that. Don't be offended when I disagreed back in the summer, and I still disagree in the fall, and I still disagree in the spring. It's not against you, it's not against the employees, it's the prioritization of the spending of money that I don't agree with. That's all. Don't, please, take it personally.
Oh, it's, believe me, I don't take it personally at all. In fact, I enjoy the discussion, and I will be succinct and respectful of Robert's Rules of Order. My opinion is this, that if someone on this council, myself included, or someone on the professional staff, have an issue with a particular investment, a particular project or a policy, they tend to, or they should, express that discontent regularly, passionately, and unceasingly. But when those people have a problem with a policy, or a program, or an investment, and say nothing, absolutely nothing, not amongst certain cliques, but in public, in writing, meet with the department head, meet with the administrator, meet with whomever, and say nothing for months and months and months, and then the evening of the budget presentation, it's all of a sudden, "I've got some problems with this." That's, that's my concern. It's not personal, it's a process issue. We talk a lot about process. The reality is that we are all, or should be intimately involved in the process and express our opinions as freely as we so choose. If certain folks wish to wait until the 11th hour and express their opinions, that's their prerogative, just as it is my prerogative to say, "Shucks, I think we could have done better."
This will be my last comment. Thank you. I was, I am consistent in, in my disagreement about this, and at every public forum we've had, I have voiced that. So if you were referring to me, I would say, "That doesn't apply." If you were referring to someone else, I can't argue about that. I don't know that somebody else. I think the people that disagree with this, this portion of the budget have been consistently against it. I don't think that people who have been for it have turned, and I don't think that people who were against it have turned. I think it's been consistent. I think every public forum that we've had, that's come out. There have been no surprises. I know how people will vote, I know, I can look up and down here, and I know how people will vote. Everyone's held to their vote, and so I don't think anybody's waiting to the end. It would be incorrect, it would be wrong, in a public forum, when something comes to a vote, not for somebody, for someone not to voice their opinion. We don't want that either. We need this dialogue.
We're, what-
Thank you.
In general, more dialogue is better, correct? I would agree with that. I would also ask if any council member had ever requested and/or codified a request for a special budget meeting, other than the ones that we had put in place for the entire budget season. I don't recall receiving an email or a certified document signed by three council members saying, "We are going to have, we request, we demand a special council or committee of the whole meeting to discuss a particular budget item." I don't recall receiving a certified document from three council members with their signatures affixed, saying, "We want more debate regarding a particular policy, investment, or program." And that's everyone's prerogative. Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to clarify, make a couple of clarifications, because you were patently wrong with a couple of comments you made. My comment about being patently unfair to the employees was the fact that we did not take the time to discuss and see exactly where the problems were. We didn't go over the report. We got the report and voted on it. We got the report an hour before the, the meeting and then took a vote at the committee of the whole. My comment was, I didn't have enough information, enough time to digest it to make a proper vote then, and that was patently unfair to the employees. Also, when we have salaries that escalate at this kind of a rate, at some point, if the economy turns, we may not be able to keep all these employees. That's patently unfair to employees. Those were my comments about that. For you to say that nobody has done anything in the last several months, in the last minute to bring this up, is incorrect. I've had several emails with the city administrator, I've had several conversations clarifying things that I didn't understand about it. I set up a meeting and requested a meeting with the city administrator to sit down and go over the numbers, to go over the things. She asked me how I came up with my, with my numbers when I disagreed and made these same comments two weeks ago, and I detailed an email to her this long, showing, "This is where I got the numbers, is anything wrong with that?" So to sit there and say that people wait till the last minute to come up and say something for grandstanding is an incorrect statement to make. And you know what? We can't have legitimate disagreements, because, you know, if we agree all the time, one of us is really not necessary in this process.
I would agree with that completely.
So, you know, I, I think that we, we have, we do have spirited discussions about it.
And we should.
But, you know, to call people out at the, at the end, to say that, you know, "We're not following a process," or that "we're disregarding a process," I, I believe is incorrect, and I think it's disingenuous to this whole, to the whole process. I, I think it, it tends to intimidate some people from perhaps wanting to speak and participate in this forum, so. You know, the stuff about valuing employees, this is the hardest thing, you know, it's very hard to look at those guys in the back row, you know, when, when you're not approving a, a gap analysis. These are, these people do great work for us. I call them and ask them to help the people in my word all the time. It's, it's a difficult thing to do. It's not done lightly, and it's not done for the newspapers of grandstanding or grandiosity. The easy thing for me to do would have been to go along with it and, and, and agree with everybody. I happen to disagree, and I, I stated my reasons why, and I think it would have been unfair to cast a vote against the budget unless I gave some explanation for it tonight. It was not an attempt to come in at the 11th hour and make any kind of a statement, so, you know, I'd like to move forward from the process. Again, I give the city credit for the, the budget that they do, the work that they put in, the work that our staff does. You know, there's not much else to say, but, but it's, it's, it's completely unfair to characterize that there have been no ongoing discussions or requests or discussion with the, the city administrator. That's incorrect. Thank you.
Unfair perhaps, but is it inaccurate? No. And I would argue this, not argue this, excuse me, I would state this. At any one time, ladies and gentlemen, during the gap analysis discussion, was there a motion made from this council, or the committee of the whole, to table that matter for further review and consideration? I'm not, I'm not, but I'm not finished. And when that motion was offered, we ruled by majority, we ruled by a council. That's it. That's how it works. But there was never any additional request for additional meetings to be had. Last year I was castigated because I had the gall to say that we have 20-some-odd meetings that everyone's invited to, and I was told, "Well, how can we possibly attend those? We're very busy people." And we are, no question about it. Very busy people. Anyone from the audience? Mr. Clerk, take the roll. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Burkhardt.
You know, I want to thank Alderman Cummings and Rodecky for speaking up tonight. I appreciate when we can have a spirited debate up here. I, the wage increase is a huge part of this budget, and I honor them and, and support them if they can't vote for this budget in favor of it because of their opposition to the wage increase. I, I appreciate that, and I am glad that they spoke up about it. That was, wage increase was a hard vote for me, it's something that's weighed on me since December. I think, as I remember Alderman Rodecky did have a motion to table it, and at the time, that might be a vote I wish sometimes I had back, but, you know, I, I think all of us up here take this process very seriously, and, and I'm glad we can't have these debates, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Ruby.
Just to, to piggyback on what Alderman Burkhardt said, I, I agree too. I think it's really nice to, to hear others' opinions and, and how and why they, they came to their decision, and I think it helps all of us either solidify our own opinion or think it through a little bit further in a, in a different light. I think it's beneficial. I, I did have something I wanted to say before that.
Sure.
If we could just get, once again, I feel like, back with the discussion on the raises, there was confusion over the competitive versus highly competitive, and I, I feel like we're kind of having that same conversation again. Can we get clarification? It was my understanding that, and Alderman Bruno even stated this just this evening, that our wages are, certain employees did receive increases to get us all at the midpoint, which was competitive, is what I recall. Can, can we just get clarification on that?
So we're, we were looking to be at the 50th percentile, meaning 50% of our comps pay above us, 50% of our comps pay below us, and that's at the midpoint of a salary range. So when we did the implementation, we figured out where the ranges should be to be within that 50th percentile, and then we look at the people based on the years they've been in their position. So, but we capped it at midpoint. So anybody who'd been in their position longer to be above midpoint, but were at midpoint or above, only got a merit increase based on their performance. Anybody who was below midpoint, but maybe should be up to midpoint, were capped at midpoint. And then anybody else who fell below the range was brought up to the minimum of the range.
Okay. And then the terms competitive and highly competitive, how do those relate?
That's a, that's a consultant term to, to be, you know, I look at the 50th percentile, and that's what we were shooting for, and so I'm assuming that why he means by highly competitive, that we're now at that 50th percentile. You would have to, you would have to clarify with him to be sure how he uses that term.
Okay, yeah, I just, I feel like-
Because it's a term in compensation world, it's not a term-
Okay.
...in our world.
I feel like those terms have created a lot of-
I believe that they have created a lot of confusion. Yes, I would agree.
Thank you.
And I, I just clarify, though, I did look up, the comp study was 29,500, just for clarification, and it was a unanimous vote to do the comp study in July. Again, I'm not discounting that I know that people were, didn't like the process or the outcome, but, but to actually approve the agreement to use the consultant was a unanimous decision at the council level.
Anyone else? Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Don Cummings.
Nay.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Jim Rodecky.
Nay.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, two nay votes. New business, ladies and gentlemen? We do have one bit of business from our economic development director. Prior to that, anyone here joining us this evening? Any new business, comments, questions for the council? Kathleen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just wanted to advise that, oh, thank you, just wanted to advise that the majority owners of Fabian Crossing have reached and executed a settlement agreement just late last week, so we learned of it this morning. They've also executed a third amendment to their Correa Construction Operation Reciprocal Easement Agreement, so that's the new lay of the land for the center, and we, we hope that they'll be able to move forward together in unified approach. Because of this agreement, we will see construction resuming as soon as possible. The first thing that we should see is crews back on site, but we will see tree removal probably later this week, which is the beginning of the landscape plan. The new landscaping should be installed sometime in May, as soon as the weather permits. It's been a kind of a cold spring, so. We also know now that Burlington expects to open in August of 2018, and Fresh Time in January of 2019. Fresh Time has a longer build-out period, just for the store. So that is what I'd like to let you know.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? New business, questions, comments from the audience? From the dais? Entertain a motion to adjourn? Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?